Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Board Clerk Maggie Smith, would you please call the roll?
Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Maggie Smith here. Gary Dunlap.
Here.
Chris Slough.
Here.
Bridget Todd Robbins.
Here.
Barbunch.
Here.
Alan Fox.
Excused. With six of the six board members present, I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to this agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published. Chris has moved.
Second.
Gary has seconded. To approve the agenda as published, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. Okay, we do not have public participation tonight, so moving on to recognition and thank yous, Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, tonight, I just wanted to first start by actually something a little different, thanking the Joint Finance Committee today up in Eau Claire. They took time and gave us the opportunity, and when I say us, the five area La Crosse County superintendents went together up to share with the Joint Finance Committee how important it is to help in funding of our public schools, especially it's detrimental here moving forward. So, we talked about, each of us took a topic and talked about topics such as the importance of our revenue limit increases and special education aid increases and other topics where, you know, and supporting mental health of our students and in staff, and then also 4K, year-round 4K also came up. So, just wanted to thank them for taking the time and going up and really doing a lot of advocacy. It's so important right now for public education to make sure that our students get what they deserve and get the education they deserve, so. All right, with that though, also, we want to thank all of our volunteers. We have multiple volunteers and it's great having them back and in our buildings and all around. Just want to thank them. It is National Volunteer Week here, coming up April 16th through the 20th. And just, they do actually make a difference and we do appreciate their, and all their help in our schools. And then, tonight is the board meeting where I'm sad that our student representative, Alan Fox, wasn't able to be here. He is dedicated and he had to work too. Our board meeting's on a Tuesday, not a Monday tonight, but just want to thank him for his past year in service and just, he did a phenomenal job in reporting out and sharing things within the district and opinions of our students. So, just thank you, Alan, for all of your service and then what you do. And then, another important recognition tonight, very important. Tonight, the school district de Homan recognizes Gary Dunlap. Gary. There. For his service to education as a board member beginning in 1997. Gary has served on many committees and in many capacities on the school board, but has devoted much of his tenure to chairing the finance committee. Gary has been the board treasurer for the last nine years and also served as vice president early in his, in his service. Gary contributed to the building of Sand Lake and Prairie View Elementary Schools, many successful referenda, most recently the $74.5 million referendum for our school improvements across the district, and numerous other initiatives to better the school district de Homan. Gary has made a positive impact on countless young lives in Homan community and just has always gone above and beyond and I definitely appreciate him for always sharing his true thoughts, perspectives, and opinions, and that's what we want from our board members. So, Gary, we want to thank you for your many years of service in the school district de Homan and wish you well. And with that, we have a couple of things for you, so we want to go around and get a picture.
And the crowd goes wild. It's difficult showing for something that happens.
There you go, there's your plaque.
I should have had an audio tape. Applause.
There's not very many people, they have two of these.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, we'll be moving on to reports and discussion. First up is Director of Transportation, Dan Garrett will present transportation updates, beginning with the 23-24 school year.
Hello. Alan and, you know, Gary, thank you both for your service. Gary, I've known you for a few years, so thank you for everything. I'm Dan Garrett, Director of Transportation. I'm just going to go over a few things with you and I'm going to start by saying everybody should know right about now that we are in a driver shortage. So, we're having a hard time keeping and retaining and finding drivers. That goes for our sub-drivers as well. We used to have 10-plus sub-drivers we can rely on, right now we're down to approximately four. And out of those four, you know, there are subs for a reason, they have other jobs, they have other commitments, so they're not always reliable. So, just putting it out there, we do have an open regular route position available. Anybody who's interested should be posted on the website soon. But this is going to kind of be talking about our shortage and what we're trying to do about that and things with that, things that we would like to do, things that we are doing. So, UHT changes for the school year, so it's unusual hazardous transportation. It's also, a lot of people refer to it as safe routes to school, some of the things we're looking at. All right, here it is, unusual hazard transportation. So, we're required to provide transportation to all students within the area outside of a two-mile radius from the schools that they live by. Things that we're running into right now is what we just talked about, it's a national driver shortage. It's been going on for a few years now and with the pandemic, it has definitely increased. A lot of our pool, a lot of the people that we hire from comes out of already retired population. And a lot of those retired population decided to stay retired. So, we're trying to figure out different ways where we can motivate people to apply, come in, starting at a younger age or stay-at-home parents, things like that. We're working on trying to gear our hiring towards that population there. And some of the issues we're running into with our routes and our areas is the growing neighborhoods. Not only are the neighborhoods expanding, we're out on County D, County V, Bryce Prairie. The neighborhoods are getting bigger, but also the size of the lots are getting bigger. So, we're going through neighborhoods and there's a house like every acre. So, that requires us to make a lot more stops in each neighborhood. So, not only do we have more neighborhoods, but the neighborhoods are getting bigger and requiring us to make more frequent stops, which is putting our buses at capacity and running over on time. We have a 75-minute time that we, as a board, agreed on to meet, and we're meeting that right now, but it's becoming more and more difficult with the amount of students we have. Some of the things we're looking at already, some of the steps we've taken is we've purchased a new software program. Our software was out of date and we purchased some new software that we're in the process of learning that will help with route optimization. It has several features, we were to cover routes for us, so if we know that bus A isn't going to be in today, we can try and combine that with bus C and D and anything else in the area. And it'll automatically do that feature if there's room on those buses. And that's the problem we're running into now, is all of our buses are at capacity, so there's not a lot of room for us to move around. So, that's one of the things we're working on. This year, we also reduced the amount of door-to-door stops we had. We started picking up at more corner locations and we stopped going into every cul-de-sac. So, it's a little bit more work for the parents and students to get to the bus stop, but it makes it more efficient for our routes. We're also working on hiring, as I just said earlier, we do have an open position, we're always seeking subs and regular route drivers, so that's an ongoing process. We're looking at student walking locations, so safe routes, so safe areas in the community where we feel that students can walk from to get to their schools. So, certain neighborhoods, we're going to have designated walking zones, and then in those zones, we're going to have walking paths. We're going to have a designated area that we feel is the safest to get from their neighborhood to the school. We have worked with Homan Police Department on coming up with these saved zones, and we're going to continue to work with the community and those around us to find out the best areas that we can, we can do this in. Some of our schools, we might have to use different doors. We do normally come in through one main door, but a few schools, we might have to use an alternate entrance in order for the students to enter the building safely. So, these are some of the things we're considering when we're looking at the areas. We were planning to start this next school year and the main reason why is we are, we're seeing ourselves being short drivers. We're already down, we could use two more drivers for this year and that did not happen. So, we're thinking if we stay about the same, we're still going to be short the amount of drivers we need to fully cover all of our area. Each school, we're going to provide a map for, and on this map, we're going to designate safe routes that we think would be accessible to all. Again, this is, these maps are not finalized yet and once they are finalized, they'll be cleaned up and paths will be put on them. Right now, it's just going to be a general area that I'll be showing you for each of the schools, I'll kind of go through quick. At the end, there is a few schools that we are working on probably that we have more students that would be walkers. This here is the Homan High School. In orange is what we consider walk zones now. The pink south of it, we would consider that a walk zone once the crosswalk with the RFIRB flashing lights would be installed and it'd be a safer option for the students to cross. There'll be another map a little bit later with more detailed on mileage and how far the, farthest house would be. Well, here is the middle school. And one of the proposed orange areas would be between Main Street and V. We figured V is too busy of an area to cross safely and too long out. Right now, we probably have for the middle school, maybe two students in this area, so that's not going to be a big change. The pink location on the bottom is an area we would consider, we're not busing any middle schoolers from that area now. The thing we're looking at on the backside of the school is all of the parents dropping off their children. It gets really congested back there and we'd be a little bit nervous of all the kids running across the road with that amount of traffic. Prairie View Elementary School, there's really not a lot we can do there. It's out of ways, there's only one rural neighborhood, and as of right now, nobody's utilizing busing to get to Prairie View from that neighborhood. Evergreen Neighborhood, it's pretty much the same area that the middle school would be in. We don't feel comfortable with the way the traffic is on V to have students cross from V, maybe at a later date if there was upgraded walking path, maybe a crossing guard, that would be something else we could look in, but what we have right now, it would just be in between Main Street and V. I will have a chart at, towards the end, that'll list the amount of students at the schools. Viking Elementary School would probably be the biggest impact just because of where it's located and how many people reside close to the school. And there'll be another detailed map a little bit later, but this would cover from Main Street into the Deerwood addition. And I'll talk more about this here shortly. Sand Lake is another area where, right now in the orange zone, this would be one of the schools that would be utilizing the back entrance of the building. There's currently no sidewalks in this location, but working with the Homan Police Department and walking through it ourselves, the traffic is pretty light and minimal and they don't see that being an issue. We would have to provide a walkway to get to the back door, so they would not be walking on the same road as the buses. And the pink zone would be future expansions if, if we need it. And right now, we can't do that because there's no crossing, no crosswalk and no sidewalk to get from the new path on Sand Lake Road to the building itself. So, that would leave the students walking through the middle of the parking lot. It is an option, something we're looking at where we could be putting a sidewalk in, but right now, that's not in the plan. Here's the amount of students we're looking at by grade and location. You can see, we're looking at approximately 50-52 students, and those are just registered active riders. There's definitely more students in the area that are not using transportation, but these are active riders, riders that we have counted. And our, as you can see, the biggest schools would be Viking Elementary and a lot of those would be from the neighborhoods right around it. This is the map I was talking about for the high school. This tells you more of kind of the distance involved. So, this is a walking path using Google Maps and it's going straight to the door instead of just a property line. So, the farthest house we have is located about a 22-minute walk or approximately one mile away. We would probably change the walking zone on this one to Amanda Court because there's more sidewalks readily available in that area and that would be our recommended path. But those maps would come out at a later date. This is just showing the area that would be covered, that we would consider a walking zone. This is the Deerwood addition that is east of Viking Elementary School. So, one of the conditions that we have here is, it looks like the farthest building we have is again approximately one, just over one mile away, about a 22-minute walk. And that's using the path that goes from the Deerwood addition to the Deerwood Park. And one thing we're looking at, we have to work with the village, is getting this path plowed. It would have to be accessible to students in the AM and the PM, you know, back and forth to school. So, we're going to be working and seeing what we can do to provide that clearing, if it's something the district can look at doing with the village. That's still a work in progress and right now, we would not consider it a safe walk zone unless that path was maintained. The path is lit and I've walked it several times, it's doable, we just have to make sure that for the winter months, it is cleared of all snow and debris. And that is, that's my show. Again, we're, this is, we're, it's a work in progress, it's just we need to start finding other solutions we can do to make sure we can get all the students we can safely to their schools. Do I have any questions?
Any questions?
I guess I have, I have two thoughts.
Please.
So, I know we were, we were both at the Safe Routes to School Task Force meeting, but the first thing that I thought of when I saw this was that it seems like a clear impetus behind redoing the Safe Routes to School plan, which I know the county talked about as something that's pretty out of date at this point, and hopefully, we could find some grant funding to support that because it feels like it's needed more.
Yes, we are, I have talked to them a little bit as you were with the meeting and I've talked to them before that. And some of the grants we are looking at, the Safe Routes to School program we have right now, that is on the transportation website, that's from 2008. So, it is outdated and it's time to be revised and we would like it to coincide with this change, but it doesn't look like that will happen. So, the timing is not working.
And then, I guess the second part of my thought was especially for the elementary schools and like more so maybe Viking and Sand Lake. I wonder about the feasibility, looking at all those little kindergartners, first graders, of maybe working with like PTOs and/or the Safe Routes to School and trying to do like walking school buses?
That is something we're looking at, but I wanted to present this to the board before we went out beyond that. But I do have some contacts at the schools that I like to work with. Walking school bus is something that's been brought up several times and something I think would work great for that area, to have a group of kids all walk together. I know there is a PTO active at the schools and I know a lot of the residents in the Deerwood neighborhood are a part of that group. And I, one of my contacts would be the lady behind the walking school bus at Viking.
Yeah, I got two questions as well. If we have students with mobility issues, are we providing accommodation?
Our special needs routes would still be running as a door-to-door stop. That would not change.
Okay, and my second question is if we miraculously got additional two or three drivers between now and the school year, would we stick with this plan that you're presenting or would we
Right.
go back to something more similar to what we have now?
Right now, we would plan to stick with it, even if we got to two to three drivers. We started out this year with enough drivers. We were lucky enough to hire a driver through the year and we redid routes. And now, we're back down into the same position where we rebuilt those routes and now we just took a driver away. So, we're running, we don't have the subpositions and the extra drivers in the background available to cover anything that might happen. If we miraculously got four, five, six drivers hired, it would something that I don't foresee happening, but something that we could definitely look at.
Yeah, the one thing that Dan is being humble about and not mentioning is him and Andrea, who run the transportation office and are there to be on call for safety situations and so on, are driving routes almost daily. And so, they are not able to do their actual jobs that they were hired to do, and that was failed to be mentioned there. So, when you're saying, you know, the likelihood is yes, we want to stick with this plan. And the key is that we'll be working with the people directly involved with that to, you know, help with what would that look like and how does that look? And, you know, if we, if we have to reevaluate, we'll evaluate in the future.
It would, it would be easier to undo this than to do it in the middle of the school year.
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, if it was my kids and it was the middle of winter and they were like in kindergarten, first grade, I'd have a lot of concerns with some of the temperatures, walking, you know, a mile to school.
That's definitely been brought up and it's one of the things that we've talked about several times and you know, some districts are going, you know, a flat, you know, two-mile, if you live within two-mile, doesn't matter where, you're considered a walker. And we decided that we, we didn't want to go that route. We do like the service we provide and we'd love to continue to do it. But as far as the younger children, it was asked, well, could we provide a bus, you know, for them on the really cold days? Then that, that becomes another issue, we don't have the driver, that's why we're making these choices. But it is a concern and something that we have to look at. I don't have a
I just know that there's days that's hard to get, walk to the end of the driveway to get on the bus because it's so cold.
Yes. And that's, you know, that wouldn't be another factor we'd have to look at when we're looking at snow days.
Yeah.
Can you clarify something on the Deerwood picture real quick?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I might have to open that back up. And I am no longer logged in.
Do you have a recollection of the picture?
Yeah.
The neighborhood that's off to the right-hand side, is that included in the walking trail?
Correct.
So, then it's the new
The new, newer portion of Deerwood, as it grows, we'd have to reevaluate it. And we went through the farthest house that is built right now and it was just over a mile away. But that is something that we have talked to HPD about and where we definitely, we walked it to make sure what the path was like and how far it was. One of the things we were worried about is students maybe trying to take the shortcut and going on State Road there or County D and walking that. So, that's something that we want to look at and trying to discourage. Definitely for the first few weeks, when this goes into place, we'd want people out there making sure that everybody's using the correct way to get to school.
It doesn't seem so bad to me since when I was a kid, we had to run seven miles uphill both ways and snow up the area.
Snow uphill, yeah.
You said that, Gary, but these kids here would have to walk uphill both ways going to school in the Deerwood part because they'd have to go uphill but
Yeah, they would.
come from the neighborhood.
Oh, I suppose.
Yeah.
There's a couple of tiny places like the bottom of the driveway down here, the kids on Gainer Street come across there. There's no sidewalk on that side. I only say that because my granddaughter whines all the time. She said when, when they close that one lane, get the car from going in there. She said, then I didn't have anywhere to walk that, it wasn't snow covered in the wintertime. So, those kids who are in Gainer and the new addition's going to be right next to them, they might, they might consider a sidewalk along there so they can get, get to the sidewalk. And I'm sure there's going to be a few of those little things out there that's going to
I think that's one thing we're recognizing is we need a lot more safe and secured sidewalks in our area and that's, I think, what you're speaking to too.
Yeah, sidewalks are definitely, it's a definitely consideration that always comes up with Safe Routes.
This has been known forever for any child in the school district, they want to ride the bus, can ride the bus.
Yeah, and we, I won't say we're doing it this year, but last year, we were picking up students who are two blocks from the school. You can look at the school. And I guess we are doing it this year because I can think of a few students who are doing it. And we would love to continue to do this service. It's nothing that any of us enjoy doing, you know, taking that away.
It seems like more and more parents are bringing their kids to school too. It seems like the, you gotta have a good way to get those kids in and out.
And that's another, that's another consideration when we're looking at having more students supposedly walk. We know that some of them are going to be driven in and what's that going to look like with congestion around the schools? That's other options that we are looking at and we're hoping some of this referendum, redoing some of those lots would help out.
Reminds me of the bus-related story, there was, we had four kids coming to Homan to school from out toward Melrose. And after a while, we discovered or realized that they're outside the school district. They've been coming for four or five years. And we asked the parents, why are they coming to home? And he said, first day of school, I put my kids out in the road, you guys picked them up.
I heard that story, yes.
Yeah, our district is, the way the district lines run out north there, one house is ours, the next house is Melman and then ours, it goes back and forth on the road. And sometimes we're getting confused about where to pick up.
I live over at Oak Park by Menards there, that's kind of the same way.
Yeah.
One side of the street, sometimes the houses are duplexes are split down the middle or one duplex is Homan School District, one duplex is Alaska.
All right, well, thank you for the great presentation.
Thank you very much and have a great night.
All right, up next, item 8.2, Dr. Mueller will present the 2023-24 CISA 4 contracted services for consent on April 24th.
Good evening. So, each year annually, we bring our CISA 4 contract for services for the following school year. You won't see many differences here. We're very fortunate because we know the cost of many things are going up, but our administration fees remain the same. And also, our services through instructional services is remaining the same. The special education services, a lot of times, this will change some and it's dependent on the type of students that we get that we have within the district each year and the services that they require. And then, the movie license is determined based off of enrollments that will get at a later date. So, overall, the increase in expenses pretty minimal from this year to next year. So, just wanted to bring this before the board for approval at the April 24th meeting. Is there any questions or any more detail anyone needs?
What is the movie license?
I'm glad you asked.
So, what that, what that allows is for us, there's copy, with copyright, it allows us to show movies within our school district that do have, gives us copyright rights. And so, it's through, just, they base it off the number of students we have enrolled and then we kind of pay our fee so that we're able to use resources basically in our LMCs and resources within the classroom. So, we're legal, so we can't get fined for copyright infringements.
When they have indoor recess and they're watching a movie, it's, it's because of this movie license or?
Well, that's part, part of the, yeah.
Or is this like educational movie, movies, like?
I would, I would say it's all-encompassing.
Okay. Okay. I wasn't sure what that was, okay.
Yep.
I was also curious what Seeds for Schools was.
Oh, yes. So, that is our software system in which we have all of our individual education plans within. And that's how we monitor, track, and stay in compliance with all that is required.
Gotcha.
Good question. Thank you, I forget some of these acronyms that we're just used to that you might not.
All right, any other questions? Okay. Moving on to item 8.3. Dr. Mueller will present an update on the McHugh Road Roundabout and the related quitclaim deed. This item will appear on tonight's consent agenda.
All right, so, just some background. As you're well aware, back actually on June 14th, you approved the memorandum of understanding with a partnership between us in the Village of Homan, Town of Holland, and La Crosse County to have construction of a new roundabout at Briggs and McHugh Road. This will be this summer. Their plan is to start right after the last day of school, so this intersection will be closed in that and they're working on other routes. I want to say over here is that one Gainer, is that Gainer Road there, Gary? Or Gardner, I can't remember, but anyways, they'll put But anyways, they'll put in another thorough way here in the meantime. And we'll have more information as we get closer on that. With this, so here's a picture of the interstate and I just want to talk in more detail some things that are going to be happening. But I just want you right now, as I talk tonight about a couple of things happening, just real, see where the, the digital sign is and where the current sidewalk is located currently. So basically, what is changing in this? This is the actual construction drying and I want to just mention a few things. So the best design concept for this proposed roundabout uses every inch available of the right-of-way for the road surface and the roundabout itself. So this situation forces the existing sidewalk that is along McHugh outside of the available roundabout. Do slight, in slightly on the, sorry, excuse me, forces the existing sidewalk that is along McHugh Road outside of the available right-of-way and slightly onto the school district property. The same situation occurs on Briggs Road heading north where the new road alignment will use every inch of the right-of-way. And although in this situation, the sidewalk that currently exists today is already on school district property for some reason, there was never a formal right-of-way deemed on that road. We're going to need to, we are engaging in what's called a quick claim deed with the village to allow them to have some of the area so that we are able to, they are able to relocate the sidewalk. And then also, we will have to take our digital sign and move it 30 feet to the east in that just so, to accommodate for the new line of site for safety and accommodate for the new infrastructure. So those are the two main, so you can, you can see here how they'll have one lane coming up that will just go right around. But then there will be a direct lane coming up right, going right into the school area. So to create that safely, and then you can see there's a sidewalk here too, but to create the roadway safely is the movement of the sidewalk has to be up a little bit onto the currently, right now, school district property. So with that, you don't have to read this. Basically, basically, a quick claim deed is what we would be signing as a school district. And what that is saying is that we allow, we deed over this small portion of, in its approximately point seven, oh, or let's see, point, sorry, point zero seven seven acres of land so that they are able to do this reconstruction. It is already fully paid through the funds that are in place already for the roundabout. There's no ex, other expense to this happening. So really, this is just procedural for the board to approve, to allow us to deed point zero seven seven acres of our land so that this project can happen. And also part of that expense with the sign moving the 30 feet to the east is also part of the project in paid already. So there is no extra expense. So any questions?
Any questions? No questions.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided. Motion by Chris.
Second.
Second by Barb. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion passes.
I just have two quick announcements. One, I just wanted to thank Bonnie Tolstead. She is retiring. She's been an educational assistant at Viking Elementary for 24 years. She's, pretty much every student that's been there knows exactly who she is and that she works within the lunchroom, you know, every day and the kids have really gotten to know her. So thank you so much for her time to the students. And then last meeting, I, I just was remiss, I, on the personnel report was our new Sand Lake principal hire in that. And I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate Matt Myers. I know he did come to the last meeting and that and he was here and so he will be serving officially in capacity of principal at Sand Lake starting July 1st. So now we have another position to fill. So anyways, but congratulations to him.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to the board debrief. I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments or committee reports you have. Tonight, we'll start with Maggie.
Yeah, just wanted to give a big thank you to Gary for all his years on the board as well as to Alan. And then because I recently walked through it myself as a parent, also a kudos for everyone working on summer school programs. And in particular, the middle school programs sounded really fun, like I would kind of like to go. And my fifth grader had a hard time deciding what his top choices were. So, so kudos to everyone who came up with such creative offerings. That's it for me.
All right, thanks Maggie. Gary?
Well, I thought about unloading.
Should we, should we save you for last?
First of all, I'd like to thank all the people who sent all the messages and cards and letters and all that about how they appreciated my service. I thought it'd be appropriate if I mentioned all the people who did that. And that's relatively easy because my wife wrote both of them. And then I always thought it would be nice if I, if I had done something for the school board that, that the, that the school board, the school district would remember forever. That never got done, but then I thought, I, I'm also glad that I didn't do something that they couldn't forget. So it kind of, kind of was all right. Got a young board right now. The, turned over the complete board almost in the last year, so a lot of, lot of changes. And I reflected on these people here and where they're, as I count, I think there's about, there's 35 on there that I, that I served with on the school board. So been around a long time. I've been around too long. I've seen 13 presidents. And the first one I was born under was Truman and he was the man who pushed the button that killed 250,000 civilians in World War II. I saw John Kennedy get murdered, saw his brother get murdered. Malcolm X got murdered. Then I saw Martin Luther King get murdered. And then Ford was almost killed. And then Ronald Reagan was almost killed. That was all in the 60s. So don't think the sick, so bad right now what's going on. It, my generation, we tried very hard to make it a peaceful cultural revolution because we had a cultural revolution in the 60s. It was, that was a, was a pretty big change for everyone. When I was in school, of course, we had dress codes for guys and girls, including slacks and shirts with collars. And in my high school, there was not a single sport for girls. There was not a, not anything available for girls to play for sports. And then women in general, they were looked down upon. They're supposed to stay home and take care of the children and so on. And there weren't many in the working force and they weren't able to get hired, glass ceiling. And my generation, we worked really hard to try to get that better. And of course segregation, 1958, black people couldn't, still couldn't vote in this country. They were given the vote in 1958 so that they could vote, which is amazing. And, and after World War II, what they did in World War II and what they done for this country, they couldn't vote till 1958. And then 1964, of course, they had the act that, that was to make the, the country whole and make the people, equal people, make, and make it, make it diversify the whole country. Of course, I've traveled all over this, all over the world in my, in my time. I've, I've worked in Asia and Taiwan and Thailand and England, Coventry, England and Germany, Singapore. And all these countries are, don't have it as well as we have it. I often want to take my kids to like Taiwan or to Singapore or to Thailand to see how the people live there so they appreciate what they had at home. Because it's amazing, at Thailand, the women are, are merchandise. When they're 13, 14 years old, they get shipped off to Bangkok or, or Pattaya so that they can provide money to the family by prostituting them. And if you want to buy a girl that's 16 to 18 years old in Thailand, it's not, it's not an issue, you can do that easily. So it's just amazing what we have over here and we don't appreciate. And also I think that the, what this group, we have, right now in this country, we have a group of people who, who seem to think that they should be able to do anything they want, whenever they want to do it. Be patient. I, I, I've, you know me, I, I've been loud and, and often criticizing these people. It really bothers me about the people that's lying, lying and, and the lack of knowledge. But it'll turn around now. These people all live in houses that just have windows, they don't have any mirrors inside. And that's something we have to change is get the, is to get the education to the people that count. Otherwise, they're going to raise a generation of kids that are dishonest and think that lying is the way to go. I'm so glad to see the young people nowadays who seem to be snapping around and, and supporting knowledge and truth in this country. So that's a little scary, but, but be patient. It's right now, it's, it's kind of leveling off and it's all being exposed. And that's why it seems like it's getting worse. It seems like it's getting bad, but we're at a point now where everything's being exposed and it'll settle down. But I don't, never did understand how people in the world could live that way and could be so negative and so, and lie so much. I'm a big student of history and I read things like Hitler, when he, Hitler was in charge, one of his favorite phrases was, make Germany great again. Mussolini is one of his favorite phrases, World War II was, make Italy great again. And then Hitler, Hitler said that when they were going through the depression in Germany, I'm the only one that can, I can only want to get you through this. I'm the only person that can save this country. And now that sounds familiar to you. It's, it is because it sounds familiar because it's been said in the last two years by other people in this country. And we have to elect the right people, we have to make sure they're smart and, and have common sense before you put them in public office. That's a lot to say. My hope, I get to see that before I leave this world, but I doubt it'll, doubt it'll happen. Now, this board here is, say it's a young board, it's a good board and they've got a great administration to work with. You guys, this big crowded group of administrators out here, that there's none better than, I, I've been around and, I've been around for 200 years and I've never seen a better group. There's, it's a good group of administrators. Let them do their job, don't micromanage them. And remember there's a school board, you don't have any power outside this building. No matter what you say or what you do out there, it, you don't have any power. Just don't micromanage them, let them do their job, let them recommend to you good recommendations and follow the recommendations because they're professionals and they know what the heck they're doing. It's a, it's a really good group. We got a great group of teachers. Let's look what we've done in the last couple of years as far as the school board has been, really been admirable. And live programs and those programs are awesome. I stop down and talk to those kids down at the Y almost every day when I'm down there. They're doing great things. I'm just, just proud to be part of the school district. And I have a lot of history with the school. And some of those things that we changed or some of the things we did, they got a long history behind them. If you ever need help and somebody filling in on the history and some of that stuff, I'd be glad to help you do that, of course, and you can always call. I'm sure Dr. Chris will call me like two or three times a week like she normally does.
Sorry, I'll be calling you Gary.
No, I really admire her and I think she's doing a great job. And I did work under three, three different administrators over, in my terms. Dr. Chris was a good one. So I hope she's around a long time. And I'd like to thank this guy here too, that communications and stuff in the last six months, it's just helped tremendously. All the rumblings and stuff about how crappy the school district was and things we're doing are bad, just calmed down to just a little tiny ripple. And that was because just of, because of the information. He's got to see what we're doing out there and saw how good the kids were doing. They go, well, you know, maybe you aren't as terrible if you look, if you seem like. All the communication and knowledge and honesty. I like to, my next tattoo is going to be knowledge and honest, and honesty because those two are the things that's keys. I'll keep rambling forever unless you shut me up. But when I, when I lived in South Carolina, it was still, it's still, it's still segregated down there. The town I lived in was split 50/50. And I, when I was in town on a Saturday afternoon, the Ku Klux Klan came through with a white band with speakers on a roof soliciting members to their, to their Klan still. And they split that town down the middle. The public schools were all black kids and every white kid, every white kid in that county went to a private white school. And they're segregated. I asked my neighbor who was 16 years old, I said, why don't you go to public school? He says, well, because I don't want to get murdered, is what he said. But I went to the basketball games for the, the, the public schools and saw those kids. They're just kids, they're, they need some help, they need some education. I used to go to a black Baptist church down in South Carolina and I walked in, the first time I went, there was 300 black people and me. And I sat right in the front row, one white guy sat in the front row. And then a couple of weeks later, I was asked to speak at a funeral of one of my friends, one of my black friends. So I spoke at the funeral and I got all kinds of accolades from those, those people. They're great people, sat down, talked to every one of them. And the last thing I'm going to say is my dad, when I was young, I asked my dad, what's the difference between a black man and a white man? He sat there for a long time, he said, nothing, nothing of difference. So I remember that forever. That's all I got. I know I'm a big baby, but that's the way.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate everything.
Thanks.
Chris, you want to fill that up?
Nope. Just want to say thank you Gary for your, your time on, on the board. Because I've been so long, seeing you around in high school, so makes me feel old as well. So, thank you.
All right, Bridget.
Yeah, I also want to thank you Gary. I think your loyalty and your love for this community and school district as a parent. And I think anyone can appreciate that.
Okay, don't screw it up.
I also wanted to say thank you to, to Dr. Mueller for your discontinued advocacy around, you know, working at the state level and really making sure our legislators understand the needs that our students have in our, in our public school. So thank you for that.
Okay, Barb.
Also would like to thank Gary for his service to our district and our community. I've known him for a very long time as well. I graduated with your daughter, so I've seen you around since we were, I think, third grade.
Yep.
We had a finance committee meeting tonight and we advanced five policies to the board for first review. Those centered around accounting and performance control, staff management and.
Thank you Barb. And Gary, I just want to give you a shout out and say thank you so much for all you've done for this district and the staff and the students. Your heart is in the right place and I can tell that every decision that you make and every time you speak, it's in support of this district and the people that are here. So thanks for teaching me many things while I've been here the last couple of years. And, and I wish you luck and feel free to come drive bus if you.
Some fill up students.
I also want to, I also want to thank Alan, our student representative, who's not here tonight, but I just thought he did an outstanding job representing the students in our high school and, and this district as well. So he was, he was a class act and stellar at what he did here as a student. So thank you, Alan. All right, we're moving on to the board debrief and written commit, committee written reports. So the board has been provided with notes from the January 23rd facilities committee meeting to review. And then our upcoming board meeting schedule, we have several committee meetings coming up. We have student achievement and learning committee meeting at 4:30 on April 17th. We have personnel and governance committee meeting 5:00 PM on April 19th. We have the facilities committee meeting at 5:00 PM on the 24th. And then the next two board meetings will take place on April 24th and May 8th. And just a reminder that that April 24th board meeting is our organizational meeting as well. And we'll be welcoming our newly elected board members that day. Let's see, the board's been provided with nine board policies that will be discussed at upcoming committee meetings. So take a look at those, they're in your packets. Also, the finance and facilities committees are advancing five policies to the board for a first reading. If approved, these policies would become effective on July 1st of 2023. And lastly, just to give an update on the election results, the results from the spring 2023 election have been canvassed and are official. Maggie. Maggie Smith, Lindsay Need and Bridget Todd Robbins have been elected to serve three-year terms, while Khadija Islam was elected to a two-year term. A recount petition has been filed, and a recount of the votes cast at the April fourth twenty twenty-three spring election for the Office of Holman School Board will begin at the La Crosse County Administrative Center at nine A M. on April twelfth, so tomorrow morning. So, given all of that, is there any other business that needs to come before the board at this time? All right, if not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Chris has me, has moved. Bridgette, seconded. Uh, to adjourn this meeting at seven fifty P M., motion carried, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. You don't even have to get one more round, Gary.